And welcome to our first city council meeting since our summer break. Would you please join us in pledging allegiance to our country?
Ready to begin? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And before we sit down, can we please have a moment of silence for the victims, the sailors on the USS John McCain, as well as the 11 victims in Hurricane Harvey? Thank you. And before we do our roll call, since we are segueing from the moment of silence, I would like to start the first council meeting since the summer break with a few words. A lot has happened in the city of Thousand Oaks and around the nation. Excuse me. Mahatma Gandhi once said, "You must not lose faith in humanity. Humanity is an ocean. If a few drops of the ocean are dirty, the ocean does not become dirty." Recent troubling events in our nation have been weighing heavily on my mind, as well as the minds of many other people. Our country is going through a time which is testing our resolve, beliefs, and yes, faith in humanity. We have witnessed vile bigotry and violence. We have seen ugly flickers of hate, even in our own community, from teenagers desperately seeking attention. But tonight, let me be clear. The city will ensure that these drops of dirty ocean water will not taint the rest of Thousand Oaks. The city will ensure that bigotry against people of a different color, religion, sexual orientation, or gender identity will not be tolerated, and neither will violence of any kind. Let me also be clear that this is not a political issue. This is an issue of our values and our morals. Let's counsel adolescents seeking the wrong kind of attention. Let's educate our children early on about values, the importance of diversity, as well as the lessons of history, of world history. Let's continue to denounce bigotry of any kind wherever and whenever we see it, but in a peaceful way. We will always have a few dirty drops in our rough sea of humanity, but we must never lose faith in ourselves. And that is why it's so inspiring to see the outpouring of help for the victims of Hurricane Harvey, not only from our city, but across the nation. And this is how we show our true colors and goodness. Thank you. And we can now do roll call.
Councilmember Price?
Here.
Councilmember Adam?
Here.
Councilmember McCoy is absent. Councilmember Fox?
Here.
Mayor Bill DeLaPeña?
Present. And I invite any of the council members to make comments if you wish to do so. If not, we can certainly move on to item number four on our agenda. Thank you. We do have a request for a continuance of an agenda item, and that is Agenda Item 8A, the La Granada Station Project. So an agreement has been reached, and a public hearing is no longer necessary, so I do need a motion to actually cancel the public hearing. Mr. Price?
Yes, I would move that we cancel the public hearing with respect to Item 8A, the La Granada Pump Station Project.
Okay. Mr. Fox, I see your name on there. Did you? Okay. So please vote.
That motion carries 4-0 with Councilmember McCoy absent.
Thank you. Tonight, we don't have any special presentations or announcements, but we do have public comments, and for that, I will call upon our city clerk.
This is a time and place for public comments. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding items on the agenda or on a subject within the city's jurisdiction. All remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole, and all documents for city council and the official records should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Under state law, public comment matters may not be considered by the council unless listed on the agenda, but may be referred to the city manager for administrative follow-up. We have three people or individuals have presented speaker cards in pursuant to council standards. They're allowed three minutes. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you. And our three speakers are Holly Gold, Tish Greenwood, and David Lake. So we call on Holly Gold first, please, followed by Tish Greenwood, and then David Lake.
Hello, everyone. My name is Holly Gold. We're from the city of Thousand Oaks. I am one of the administrators at Hillcrest Royal Retirement Community. This is my mom, Inga Jakovovich, our executive director. We've been a retirement community there for 30 years, family-run, owned, operated. And we are not only affordable, but we are also HUD-approved, and the only one in the community that has that. We understand the need to help others and provide care and support to all those that are in need in our community. It's what we do every day, and we love doing it. Obviously, our niche is seniors, but we recognize that our children, single parents, and a homeless population that are all in need as well. Our building shares a parking lot and resides next door to the old Social Security building, just to give you a frame of reference, that houses the Senior Concerns Thrift Shop, as well as the Lutheran Services that provide free meals, showers, and health care to the homeless population of Thousand Oaks. This homeless population has become a growing safety concern for our building and our residents, and this is a problem that we are requesting your help to rectify. The homeless population that visit the Lutheran Services congregate in our parking lot and on the lovely walking path behind our building. They drink, there's drug paraphernalia, and they defecate around the area in our building as well. Not to mention, they sometimes enter our building wanting food, bathrooms, and shelter. This is a huge safety concern for my residents who daily walk on that path, not just for exercise, but to go to the local CVS or Senior Concerns Thrift Shop. And this is a much safer route for them than Moore Park Road, because there's no major intersections or cars or anything that they have to deal with. However, it's not the case anymore. They daily report to our office staff that they are scared, that it smells, and that people approach them, and they don't want to walk anymore. And this is really unacceptable to us. We call the police as often as we can, and I have provided you all with a report from the sheriff's office from the last year, where there's 17 calls that we've made specifically regarding these incidences. However, we could call on this every single day. There was sheriff in the parking lot today and yesterday as well, and quite often. In fact, they encouraged us to come speak here tonight and referenced us to the Camarillo City Municipal Code, because they actually have two different codes in there, which I've provided with you as well tonight, which is 10.42 and 10.46, about camping and storage of personal property in public places and sitting or lying in public places as well. Both of these ordinances are enforceable by the police and prohibit transients from using public spaces inappropriately, which is happening daily by our building. We feel that with little to no regulation or a city ordinance enforceable by police, that in essence, we are promoting homelessness in the city of Thousand Oaks rather than forcing them to find viable solutions. We need Thousand Oaks to support its aging community and local businesses and to help us by adopting or creating ordinances similar to Camarillo that prohibit camping and storage of personal property in public places that is enforceable by law or law enforcement agencies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tish Greenwood, followed by David Lake.
Hello, I'm Tish Greenwood from Santa Monica, California, but I work here in Thousand Oaks, at the California Museum of Art, Thousand Oaks. And first of all, I wanted to say thank you so much for the award of the Excellence in the Arts, for emerging arts leadership. It means so much to me to have such a prestigious award granted by this community, that I've been here for a year doing my best to put quality curated exhibitions out there that are thought-provoking and meaningful. To further my goal and to our vision of the museum, I have some exciting news to announce is our upcoming exhibition, Expose: The Female Lens in a Post-Identity Era. I know that term is very much an art-speak word, post-identity, and that means there was a time that people thought that we could move beyond gender, or race, or color of our skin, or religion, and that we moved up beyond it. And so that is what this exhibition is analyzing. It is focusing all on female photographers that are working in California, and they are each expressing their own terms of what it means to be a female photographer and a woman, right? And their identity. But what is really interesting about this exhibition, besides having one of the most influential artists, photographers of L.A., Joanne Callis, whose son, who also happens to live in Thousand Oaks, is that we've arranged a collaboration with Larry Jans's gallery for Friends, and they're also doing a show about female photographers. So right along Thousand Oaks Boulevard, you're having a Fem's Photos Fest that's going to last for a good two months, starting September 7th. And I thank you so much for supporting the arts in Thousand Oaks, that the arts do have a place here. Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations. David Lake?
Thank you. My name is David Lake, and I live in Thousand Oaks, adjacent to Wildwood Regional Park, main entrance at the end of Avenida de los Arboles. I've annoyed many of you in other board meetings and emails regarding this issue with the traffic and safety issues that emanate from this dirt parking lot at the western terminus of Avenida de los Arboles. First of all, I want to thank you and acknowledge some of the great work that COSCA is starting to do after a lot of neighborhood input on mitigating some of the crowd issues, spreading the crowd out to other parking lots, and would like to ask that the city of Thousand Oaks engage and consider working through COSCA and perhaps other agencies to develop a regional transportation plan for the open space, so that we do not become the Eden Canyon of the West. I don't know how many of you are familiar with that, but Paradise Falls draws a huge crowd of thrill-seekers who come in from outside the area to specifically alter their mood in some way and then jump off the waterfall. And this is extremely popular. It's already resulting in injuries and accidents, and some of these people drive up my street every day because the Google Maps directions directs them up my tiny suburban kid-infested street. So I get dozens, maybe 100 people driving up the street, looking at their device, sometimes speeding, sometimes driving recklessly. I would like to engage the city and ask that a task force be created to study this idea of a regional transportation plan for the park. There are actually 10 parking lots adjacent to trailheads serving the open space, and in these popular maps published by the Santa Monica Mountains National Recreation Area and public agencies, one of them is on the map. It's the one that's 50 feet from my daughter's bedroom window. It's a dirt parking lot. People speed around it, they drive recklessly, they have tailgate parties, they're at all hours, even though COSCA has made a valiant effort to close the parking lot at night. I can tell you, last night, it didn't work, there were people there, and they moved boulders, broke out, and then when they scraped their car on a boulder, there was quite a loud and angry and somewhat violent response. There are a lot of issues to be looked at. Why the other 10 parking lots that serve trailheads and that are not next to houses or not on these maps needs to be looked at. Please consider looking at a regional transportation plan for the open space before it becomes a major city issue, as it has in Altadena around Eden Canyon. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lake. I will let the city manager answer some of the, or address some of the concerns that were raised.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I saw that Police Chief Tim Hegel was able to come out and chat with our first speakers. We do have a task force that's been working on homelessness issues, and we certainly will work to address those concerns. The Somato exhibition that is coming up, I'm going to try to swing by the opening night of that, looking forward to it. And as regards to Wildwood, our COSCA manager, Shelley Mason, is here, so I'll have Shelley step out and talk to Mr. Lake regarding his concerns and potential areas that COSCA could continue to work on this issue. As was mentioned by the speaker, we've done quite a bit in trying to work with CRPD and the city to resolve some of the issues and concerns, and there's always more to do. So Shelley, if you wouldn't mind catching them. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Powers. And before we move on to our consent calendar, I would like to welcome the Boy Scout troop number 730, sitting over there, hi, to tonight's council meeting. Welcome. I hope you will learn plenty tonight. All right. Our consent calendar is up next. Are there any items which any of my colleagues would like to poll? If none, then I'm asking for a vote. Mr. Adam?
Thank you, Mayor. Move the consent calendar.
It's not on my screen.
Do you want to go ahead and state what your vote is?
Yes. The vote is yes.
That motion passes 4-0 with Councilmember McCoy being absent.
Thank you. And since item number 8A was polled from tonight's agenda, we can now go to our first department report, number 9A, the Pavement Overlay and Slurry Program. And that will be presented by our Public Works Director, Mr. Jay Spurgeon, and his team.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And with me tonight on the dais is Nader Hadari, our Engineering Division Manager, who will actually walk you through the project briefly, some of the details, and give you some previews on where we're going to be working next summer. This is the largest paving project that we've done ever. Over $14 million we're going to spend. We're going to touch 50 miles of roads throughout the city. That's like 13% of our total road network. This is really huge. It's exciting to be able to move this project forward. We've been working on it now for some months, getting ready. Tonight, we're going to ask you to approve some contracts for technical consultants that we will need for the project to refine things and also work through construction on materials testing and inspection and whatnot. But I just, before Nader starts, I just wanted to say thank you to the council. Your leadership, your support of this vital city infrastructure is really noted, and I was just so pleased to have $10 million one-time money from General Fund Reserves added to the project, first time ever. And again, thank you for your support of that. That makes a huge difference, and we can obviously resurface many, many more miles of streets than we would have otherwise been able to. And I also just, to wrap up here for myself, the state legislature passed SB1, and that was huge. That was an increase in gas tax, which is not an easy thing to do, but that provides significant additional revenues for us going forward, $3 million more per year in gas tax revenues that we can use on our streets going forward. And especially, I want to give a shout-out to our Assembly Member Jackie Irwin, who supported that vote. And again, that's going to make a huge difference. So I'm going to let Nader continue, and we'll go through this quickly and move on. Thanks.
Thank you, Jay, and good evening, council members. Our city streets are one of our largest and most valuable assets with a total combined value of over $300 million. We know that high-quality streets and roads are the top community priority, as evidenced by the recent Citywide Community Attitude Survey. Our streets are currently in very good condition with a PCI Pavement Condition Index of 76, which is in the very good category. The county-wide average is in the low 70s, and the statewide average is in the mid 60s. So as such, our goal is to preserve and maintain the streets in this very good condition over the long term. This graph shows the historical funding for the pavement program over the past 10 years. It also shows the needed investment to keep the overall pavement condition in the very good range. As you can see, the current funding for the program was insufficient to meet the funding needs going forward, as you can see on the right-hand side there with that $4.5 million annual gap since 2014. In order to alleviate that gap for this current two-year budget cycle, the city council will be investing a total of $14 million into the 2018 pavement program from the combination of sources listed here, with potentially more coming from a California recycle grant that we are pursuing. This investment, including the one-time $10 million general fund allocation that Jay alluded to, will help us preserve and improve our transportation network and provide high-quality, safe streets for our residents. You'll notice there's a $3.3 million contribution there from the SB1 funding source on this slide. So what exactly is the SB1? It's the new statewide transportation fund, which is eligible to be used on road and transportation rehabilitation projects. This additional $3 million a year going forward will help in a great way to reduce that $4.5 million structural gap that exists. So now let's take a look at the same pavement chart with the $10 million one-time general fund contribution shown in purple there. It's split across a two-year budget cycle, which is circled, as well as the $3 million from the SB1 contribution in red. Thanks to the SB1, we're going to have more funding going forward. It's important to note with this graphic that with this additional funding, the Citywide PCI Index will jump from 75 to 79 in the year 2018 at the completion of this project. This is a tangible benefit for our residents and our businesses that they will enjoy as a result of this investment, and this four-point jump is significant considering that most agencies are struggling to keep their PCI as-is and prevent it from sliding as it does every year on a one- or two-point basis. So our 2018 program will consist of rehabilitation of 50 miles of streets that's split into all regions of the city, with 28 miles of it being the overlay and 22 miles being a slurry seal. As you can see, there's also, as we'll get into, there's a couple of city facility locations which will also receive rehabilitation. So there's three primary types of strategies that we're going to be including for next year's program. You'll notice that Cape Seal is not on the list. All three of the solutions are being used across all different types of streets, arterials residential, where appropriate, and we've used all three of these successfully in the past. And all three of them use recycled tire rubber, which is in line with our long-term efforts to be sustainable. So here's the view of the slurry seal, which is a thin resurfacing treatment, protects and seals existing pavement, and improves ride quality and aesthetics, and lasts about five to seven years in terms of extending the pavement life, and is a cost-effective solution. As we go up in terms of thickness of treatment, the thin maintenance overlay is the intermediary solution that we'll be incorporating, and it's an inch and a quarter thick. This is used as an alternative to overlay where conditions warrant more than a slurry seal but don't need the full overlay. This will extend the pavement life about 10 or 12 years. And then the full overlay, which is two inches thick, which corrects surface defects and ride quality, and will improve and extend the pavement life up to 20 years, is depicted here. Couple of views from last year into the 2016 program. This is the slurry seal going down on a drone photo. On the left-hand side, you can see the beforehand, and on the right-hand side is the application being performed. Here's the thin maintenance overlay on Shirley Drive, before and after, side-by-side, being applied, and then the more comprehensive treatment on the overlay here on Hillcrest Drive near Westlake Boulevard. So here's a quick sampling of some arterials that are included in this year's program, which again has been made possible, and many of these are possible, made possible by council's investment into this project and the new funding from SB1. As always, all of the streets have been selected based on a detailed pavement analysis, studies, and long-term lifecycle analysis. So let's start here. This is Lynn Road between Avenida de los Arboles and the 101 freeway. And also included in the program is Avenida de los Arboles, I'm sorry, the previous one was Lynn Road between Avenida de los Arboles and the 101. This is Arboles between Parkview and Westlake Boulevard. We also have Herb's Road, south of Avenida de los Arboles to El Monte, and Avenida de los Flores from Lynn to the 23 freeway. And one more, just to highlight for tonight, is Thousand Oaks Boulevard. From the portion east of Westlake Boulevard, will receive a more comprehensive treatment, and the portion west of Westlake Boulevard to Duesenberg and Autumn Mall will also be The three city facilities that will also receive rehabilitation for the drive aisles and parking lots are depicted here. One is the Transportation Center on the left, working from left to right. Then we have the City Hall complex, and also being included is the Childcare Center across from Cano School Road. The project schedule is before you. We are entering into the final design stage, and that's why we are having these two consultants before us tonight for approval that allow us to get into the final design and the bid and award phase and get into construction in the springtime. This program is a little bit larger than they have been in the past, as Jay mentioned, so we're going to be starting earlier and also be doing coordination to make sure a lot of the areas adjacent to schools are done in the summer months, and that is afforded by starting a little bit earlier. Our public outreach program is ongoing, and it involves, it's a multifaceted program. We're going to be deploying branding, project, message boards, press releases, continuously updated website, which is listed below, which is a new website, which is specifically set up for this project, which is www.toaks.org/yourstreets. And that's where all of the information will be housed. Thank you again, and the recommendations are included in the staff report. The staff is available to answer any questions.
Thank you very much for this update. Are there any questions? I don't see any questions, and I don't think we have any speakers either. Oh, Mr. Price does have, oh, now they're coming. Al Adam, Andrew Fox, Jill Price. Mr. Adam?
I was going to make a motion, but perhaps Mr. Fox and Mr. Price would, or you were going to make one. Who wins the motion contest?
Well, you were the first one who pushed the button, but since, it's fine, go ahead, Mr. Adam.
All right, well, I'll do that, and if you gentlemen want to chime in, please feel free. All I can say is that every poll I've ever seen conducted of our citizenry always ranks two things the highest, public safety and our streets. And public safety, of course, we're one of the safest cities in California, if not the entire nation, and our streets are consistently ranked the highest of any of the 10 cities in the county. And now with this program, they're going to be ranked even higher. And now with this program, they're going to be ranked even higher. So the quality of streets are there. We listen to what our citizens want and we comply. Jay mentioned that the city was able to move $10 million from the general fund to get this project done. That's because we had a very good year last year, thanks to the conservative stewardship of the funds that the city receives, and John Adams has a lot to do with that, as well as his council. So it's going to be a great project, and I think it's all going to be done about this time next year, isn't that right? We're going to move right along. We've got a lot of public outreach. If you have any questions, they'll all be answered on the website. And so with that, I'd like to move staff recommendations, one through four.
Thank you. We have a motion. Would you please prepare us, Madam Clerk, for a vote? Oh, you comment? Yes, Mr. Price.
Please, I just, I wanted to say that while this is the largest undertaking that public work staff has done in the city of Thousand Oaks, I know that we're in good hands with Mr. Hadari there, who, coming off the heels of a very successful undergrounding project on Westlake Boulevard. Significant outreach, fantastic job. And in echoing the comments of my fellow Councilmember, Al Adam, here, this, this one-time $10 million investment in the city's infrastructure will allow us to reduce that deferred maintenance that had been kind of creeping up. So we're, we're going to make up some ground here, and that's, that's a good thing. That's a great thing, as a matter of fact, and the residents of Thousand Oaks will be the beneficiaries of that. So good luck. I know you'll do a fantastic job.
Thank you. Well, I'm just glad we're not using Cape Seal anymore, so that's a good thing. So with that, I think we can prepare, oh, Mr. Fox, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to kind of continue this conversation briefly about how the city spends its dollars with respect to maintaining a well-balanced city and making difficult decisions that aren't necessarily the glitzy political benefit that you get. And this is just another example. We identified monies because we had a shortfall in our road maintenance program due to a variety of things, that we were able to dedicate this money for streets. We have done similar things in the past with respect to our water systems, our treatment facility. There's a variety of infrastructure items that the city pays attention to. Even when budget times were lean, we cut positions. And so I just take these opportunities to point out that our staff, city management, and past and present councils, we don't kick the can down the road on these maintenance issues, and that's primarily why we have a premier city. And this is just another example. We're going to pass this motion tonight. There may be a little article in the paper, but sometime during the next year or so, somebody is going to be driving down essentially a new street in their residential neighborhood, and how cool is that? So just congratulations to the staff. I'm assuming we're using a different slurry so we don't get all the comments like we got last time? Very good, okay, all right. Thank you.
Yes, that was the Cape Seal that I was referring to. All right. Thank you. So now, can we, I'll call for a vote now.
That motion passes 4-0 with Councilmember McCoy absent.
Thank you very much. Onto number 9B, and this item is requesting to initiate a general plan amendment from medium-density residential to institutional, and this will be presented by our Community Development Director, Mark Towne, and Carrie Finley, Senior Planner.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. This item involves the initiation of an amendment to potentially change the general plan in Thousand Oaks, and also to allow concurrent processing of entitlements. This is an aerial photo of the subject area, and if you can follow the cursor, the property is of course bounded in red, adjacent to Moore Park Road. We're looking with north up in this image, so Moore Park is immediately to the east of the subject property. It is opposite the new 20 Oaks project, which is here on the extension of Mayflower to the west. Not surprisingly, 20 new single-family homes there, and then that ties into Caneo Community Park. That's this open space slash parkland, which extends over to the park and to the Caneo Botanic Gardens. Moving to the west is Warwick, which of course feeds down with Moore Park to Wilbur to the south. And just another point of reference here to the southwest is Fireworks Hill. I'm sorry, Fireworks Hill right here. So, again, the, the request is twofold. Allow a general plan land use element amendment from medium-density residential to an institutional designation which is appropriate for what is proposed, which is a memory care facility. And also already mentioned the concurrent processing request, which we will talk about momentarily. So when we talk about general plan amendments, it's important to understand the, the general plan landscape, and as you can see, the subject property is medium-density residential. That is this, this green color, and you can see that it's surrounded by low-density residential on three sides and medium-density to the south. You can see a high-density, an apartment project is immediately to the southwest diagonally across the street. And again, this is Moore Park, and here's Wilbur for reference. In terms of a little bit of sort of factual background, it's a little bit over two acres in size. Right now, it has a parking lot on site which services the New Life Mission Church. If you were to approve this initiation, the applicant would need to process a zone change. They would be going from our residential plan development category, maximum of 15 units per acre, to our PL zone, which is public, quasi-public, and institutional lands and facilities, which is appropriate also for a memory care facility. Even with that zone change, a special use permit is required for an assisted living facility. And just as a little bit of broad background, currently we have nine assisted living facilities in the city. As you know, we have one under construction on Grande Vista, which is the Sage Mountain Project. That's immediately west of Wendy, overlooking the Caneo Grade. And then we have, in addition to this one, we have another proposed project, the Griffin Assisted Living Project on Duesenberg, which you had previously initiated for a general plan amendment as well. This is a view of the site looking to the southwest, so it's basically this, you're looking obviously at the vacant portion of it, right here in the foreground, parking lot on top, Moore Park here to the left, and Mayflower here to the right. As you can see, there are a few trees on site, no o'erlandmark trees, those are pine trees. And then if you look at the property from Warwick, you can see it to the, to the left here, this area, and you can see to the right, the newly improved sidewalk and related landscaping and retaining walls associated with that 20 Oaks, single-family home project that I mentioned a few minutes ago. In terms of staff's evaluation of the project, we support it for several key reasons. One, there appears to be a need for memory care facilities in the community, in the assisted living facilities that are already in operation, the ones that have memory care. They have told us repeatedly over the years that that's an important component of their, their operations, and in those facilities, we're looking at typically about 25% memory care, 75% assisted living. Moreover, just in terms of local demographics, the population over 85 years old was one of the highest, actually it was the highest demographic in terms of population increase in the last census period. It increased 56%. So there is an older segment of our population that could benefit from these types of facilities as well. Also compared to the county, we're a few percent higher in terms of residents 65 years and older. We think that the proposed use would be compatible with the residential uses both existing and proposed around it. Memory care and assisted living facilities tend to be quiet in nature, and we've not experienced any conflicts with other assisted living facilities that are near to residential. In terms of the mezzery, citywide bank, this change, if, if ultimately approved, would result in an addition of 32 dwelling units to the citywide bank, raising it to 393 units. And that's because you're going from residential to institutional. The basic process is, after tonight, if you opt to support this proposal, this GPA initiation, then the applicant will file their zone change application, as well as a special use permit. That package, along with the general plan amendment, will go to the Planning Commission for recommendation, but as a legislative item, we'll come back to you for final action. And with that, staff would recommend the City Council initiate this land use amendment to change the general plan on the subject property from medium-density residential to institutional and to allow concurrent processing of legislative actions with entitlements, which we feel is appropriate because it enables you and the Planning Commission to see the entire package of proposed changes, including what these legislative changes actually mean on the ground in terms of an actual brick-and-mortar project. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions. And to my left is Carrie Finley, Senior Planner and the case planner on this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Towne. Mr. Adam?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Towne. So this is a memory care only facility, is that correct?
That is correct. 100% memory care.
Okay. Do we have any other memory care only facilities in the city?
No, we do not.
So this would be a first?
This would be the first.
All right, that's what I, I thought that was the case, but as you say, we have combined assisted living with memory care, so this would be memory care only. So there's an advantage to that, I would assume?
I think that there is, and the applicant could of course speak to this, but the design for memory care is fundamentally different from the design for a traditional assisted living facility, in terms of both the physical design, the operations of the facility. Special approaches are needed to ensure the safety and health of the residents. And so having a facility that is entirely designed for memory care, for those with memory care conditions, staff thinks is, is a good idea, that it's, it's an appropriate idea, and that it would enable a facility to really provide a high level of care for individuals, individuals with those special needs.
To cater to that one segment, maybe more efficiently than a combined approach.
That is correct.
All right, very good. Thank you, Mr. Towne.
Thank you, Mr. Adam. Mr. Price?
Yes, thank you. We don't have to go back too far in history to our last application for a 100% memory care facility, and there was some concern about parking at that facility. And do I recall that we made some changes to the parking ratios? And if so, what did we change from and to?
You changed from, I believe it was .4 spaces per bed to .6 spaces per bed. It was a significant increase, and that was a municipal code amendment that has fully been approved and implemented. That would apply to this project. So we don't anticipate parking issues. Obviously, the residents aren't driving, but typically, memory care does require a slightly higher level of care in terms of, in terms of employees, and so, again, the applicant can speak to that, but we're confident that, that the new parking standard will address the parking supply.
And I think this parcel is, it lends itself a little bit more to the additional parking spaces that'll be required, more so than the property that we were speaking of last time?
Correct. The property that we looked at before, in terms of also a general plan amendment initiation, was adjacent to an apartment complex, which resulted in a lot of on-street parking, and so that was a concern. In this case, although you have apartment complexes to the south, we don't see that type of parking situation immediately adjacent to this property.
Thank you.
If there are no further questions, and we can go to public comments. We have five speakers. First one is, oh, Madam Clerk, did you need to announce this, or am I okay with calling the names?
You're okay with going forward.
That's right. It's a department report. Curtis Johnson is our first speaker, followed by Doug Pancake and Paul Mullin.
Thank you. My name is Curtis Johnson, and I'm a resident of Moore Park. I'm also an executive pastor at Calvary Community Church. They're right out about 500 feet off of the county line there in Westlake Village. And I'm here because I'm in favor of the Silverado Memory Care Organization coming into the community. I've been working in this community for 26 years, but my relationship with Silverado started about four years ago, when one of our staff members left our employment to join the staff of Silverado in Calabasas. And it was through that exchange of employee that we became familiar with Silverado and started to host them, their community relations personnel, to come to Calvary and speak not only to our staff and our care department, but also our congregation, and to learn more about memory care. And since then, we've reciprocated as well by, in the summer, having service projects at the Silverado Memory Care Facility in Calabasas for our students here, high school students in particular. So it's been a great relationship with the organization, and I'm excited to hear that they have the potential to come into Thousand Oaks. Thank you.
Thank you. Doug Pancake, followed by Paul Mullin and Lauren Shook.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Councilman. I wanted to take just a minute of my time and thank your planning department. I'm the architect. My name's Doug Pancake, the architect for Silverado Senior Living. I've been working with this, this special building design for over 20 years, and I've been very fortunate to be able to watch the evolution of this building design affect lives. One thing you will see with the applicant, as well as myself, is a real passion for caring for our residents. My firm only does senior living and healthcare work. We've designed a reputation and a practice around helping cognitively impaired individuals live a better life in a, in a very residential feeling environment. And the good news is, it works. It's worked for 20 years, and our other buildings, it will work here. We've taken great lengths to fit into the residential character of our neighborhood. You'll see our building as it evolves, so with the kind of a, an eclectic California, Spanish colonial style, contemporary California, Spanish colonial style. It's very residential in materials. You'll see barrel tile roofs, lead stone, cement plaster, wrought iron, exposed wood, and relief all over the building. But more importantly than that is, the building's designed on the initial concept, the space plan and the floor plans. The detailing is designed to help support this special population. We call it prosthetic environmental design. It helps support or compensate for declining skills. You'll also hear us talk about the therapeutic aspect of the environment. The environment itself, the floor plan layouts, the, the interaction with the environment has a therapeutic value, which actually helps slow the course of Alzheimer's disease and other dementing illnesses. So the gentleman following me is my boss, where I report to Paul Mullin. Lauren Shook is the CEO of the company here. Again, you'll see a wonderful passion. And I wanted to again thank the planning department. Carrie Finley is our case planner, in a word, professional, charming, helpful, and she's a very wonderful asset to your city. Thank you, Carrie, and thank you, City Council.
Thank you. Paul Mullin, followed by Lauren Shook and Amy Comments.
Good evening. My name is Paul Mullin, from Irvine, California, with Silverado Senior Living. Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council, and for having us this evening and considering our project. Silverado has 36 memory care communities throughout the United States today, and we think of Thousand Oaks as one of the best locations we could possibly serve. With the statistics mentioned earlier, the higher acuity that you're seeing and higher age of your population going to 85, the American Medical Association does show that at the age of 85, you have about a 47% chance or incidence of some form of over 60 dementias that are out there beyond Alzheimer's. So I think we'd really be an asset to your community in coming on board. We also partner with all the other assisted living communities here. Earlier was at Belmont Village, visited with them. We consider them part of the, the- We consider them part of the assisted living family that we're part of, and they had mentioned to me, their 54 units are currently full for memory care. So it tells me there's still a real need for your community. You know, as Doug had mentioned, this really is a request for institutional zoning, but our dream is to create a residential community that fits the residential character of the neighborhood. Everything we do hides the institutional and clinical prowess that we have behind really a residential setting with children, with pets. We invite our employees to bring their children to work, to really help a purpose-driven lifestyle for our residents. And that's what we're after, is bringing life back to the people that we serve with dementia and not just forgetting them. We already had one community outreach meeting. It was well-attended, with several of the senior organizations here in Thousand Oaks in attendance, and felt like we had some really good momentum. We'll continue that community outreach through the Acorn Newspaper. Even tonight, I think we have an interview with them, and absolutely want to become part of the fabric of Thousand Oaks in the city here. And lastly, I'll just mention that, in general, some of the feedback we've gotten around elevation, we have a very low elevation of a building, a maximum height of around 27 feet, which really preserves the view line from that hillside. We were out there earlier, and there's magnificent views in the mountains that we want to share with our neighbors. So that lower elevation helps that. And to the comment on parking, that .6 parking ratio is exactly what we've proved out through our parking studies, to be most efficient for our staffing, and we welcome it. We think that's a good fit, at right around 49 stalls, which we will accommodate on the site. But very excited to be here, very excited to be part of the community, and hope you can see it to include us as this zoning request is made. Thank you.
Thank you. Lauren Shook, and then Amy Cummins.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, council members, for having us this evening. I am the co-founder, president, CEO of Silverado, founding the company about 21 years ago. And the vision of Silverado is to give equality of life to people with memory-impairing diseases that they haven't seen in a long time, to give equality of life to the family members for those people. Give a change in quality of life for the associates, the people who work with us, that we get to work with each day. We're going to change their lives, too. So let's change their lives for the better. In our 36 memory care communities, that's all we do throughout the entire company in the assisted living arena, is take care of the memory impaired, because they are such a complex set of problems and diseases, and there can be a significantly enhanced quality of life that's measurable, and you can see it if you have the resources surrounding them to make that difference. We have set our purpose. Our purpose in Silverado is to change the world. Our purpose is to change the world and the way memory care services are delivered, because what has been seen in the past is wrong. People over-medicated, people in that nursing home view that you may have of 20, 30 years ago, with them lined up in the hallway, looking at the other hall, restrained in a chair, that is wrong. We are dead set against that. That should never happen. No restraints at Silverado ever, ever occur. And we reengage people in life in so many ways. There are so many different stories about how we do that. But we've set the mark on a national level, causing the Senate Committee on Aging to invite me to speak to them, and to put into the national record our, some of our systems for controlling behaviors without using medications, for preventing falls with injury, without injury. So I can go on and on. There's golf channel shows, where the number one referral party of choice for the NFL, when they got hit with the Senate Committee on Aging's. Dr. Pelman, the medical director, if you saw the movie Concussion, that's the Dr. Pelman that called me and said, "I think you're the best memory care service in the nation. Can you come to New York and talk to us?" And just one moment, let me tell you what kind of a neighbor we are. You know we're going to fit in. We're going to be part of your neighborhood. We're going to be part of your community. We're going to do educational programs for free. But where the rubber meets the road is what we have been experiencing over the last week. And, you know, so that's in Houston, Texas. So we have six memory care places there. So, excuse me, not getting enough sleep. So in the six places, this is what neighbor we are. We have about 600 people we're taking care of. We have hospice, have 250 people in hospice throughout that market, living in homes. And we take in 100 people that have to evacuate. Department Health Services sends to us by boat 36 people from the rehab hospital that have to get out. So, excuse me, so last night, we're looking at the creek 100 yards from our place. The creek is normally two and a half miles away. So do we evacuate or don't we? And we have buses ready, staff ready, prepared to go. We know where we're going, but that's the kind of neighbor we are. We thank God we didn't have to do that. But when the rubber meets the road here, which is probably in the shape of earthquake or the shape of fires, which what we've done in California is, we take people in. We take people in without thought, without concern. What our people are facing is exhaustion, roads closed, they can't get there, staff working, a limitation of resources of supplies and food and medical supplies. And without hesitation, the answer is yes. So I've taken up too much time. But that's the neighbor you'll get with Silverado. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Shook. I do have a question for you really quickly, if you don't mind. The facility, and thank you for the description of the situation in Houston. We've all been seeing that on television, and it does pull at your heartstrings, no doubt. The proposed facility here in Thousand Oaks, is that going to be a lockdown facility?
Our memory care community, we refer to as a secured community rather than lockdown, but it is secured, so no one can wander out on their own. But there's interior courtyards, giving people freedom of movement and the opportunity to get outside and enjoy life and have control of their life in every possible way, without risk of them wandering out into the street, where they would be harmed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The final speaker on this agenda item is Amy Cummins.
And that will teach any of you that show up late for a city council meeting, you have to follow the CEO and a pastor. Okay, I'm going to do my best. Honorable Mayor, city council members, and esteemed staff, thank you for having me tonight. My name is Amy Cummins, and I am the vice president of Community Employer Relations for Los Robles Hospital. At Los Robles Hospital, our mission is to be the regional destination for care. And I think that certainly the city of Thousand Oaks, respecting its residents in the Canejo Valley, have done everything they can to think sequentially, to make sure that we are providing within our own city bounds, what is thoughtfully designed, not only for our children, for what we are aspiring for, affordable housing, for those that are graduating from college, but certainly for our growingest demographic, and that is our seniors and those that are aging. Recently, we just hired on a brand-new position at Los Robles Hospital, dedicated specifically to senior care. And we know that there is a growing need within our community. Silverado has designed a specific need for that, which defines dementia and Alzheimer's. And speaking from a place of no, as a daughter, and one that had to seek, you know, a facility, I didn't want to take my father outside of, you know, the community that I love and that he had loved and grown up. And it was very difficult. So I think that the most responsible thing that we can do, and again, thinking sequentially, that we can do for our community, is to embrace this. The, I'm reminded by, and I'm just going to go back to Pastor Curtis here, I was fortunate enough to attend services that Pastor DeWitt, which is one of our senior pastors here at Calvary, that was the inception of Calvary, and he came back out of retirement this weekend for a sermon. And his sermon was specific to the most important commandment, which was "Love thy neighbor." And I just found it to be poetic. And it just came to me when I was sitting here tonight. There's no mistake. And again, I think that if we are taking care of our neighbors to the right, to the left of us, vertically, you know, horizontally, this is the most responsible thing that we can do. And there's a significant growing need in our community. And so I'm looking forward to supporting this project. Mr. Shook, you know, you've dedicated your life and your legacy. Clearly, you have good taste, because you could have chosen any community, and you've chosen the Canejo Valley. And I hope to use one of my favorite words at the next speaking engagement, which is slurry, because slurry is what we'll need to do when we take over this property, right? Tim, you'll support me. Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you, Amy. Okay, and this concludes our public speaker section for this item 9B. Are there any questions by council members? No, let me see here. Mr. Price? You're ready for a motion? Go right ahead, then.
If there are no questions, I'd be happy to move approval of, let's see, recommendations one and two. And I wish you the best of luck. Hope to see you back here before us in the not-too-distant future.
Good, we do have a motion. And are there any comments to the motion? The only comment that I would like to make is that the parking situation, I'm glad that that was addressed, because as we know, at all of the senior living facilities here, nursing homes, there basically is no parking available. And so the fact that you were addressing that is a good thing. So with that, I will call for a vote. The motion carries 4-0 with Councilmember McCoy absent. Thank you. Moving on to item 10A, the Business Roundtable Work Plan, proposal for a public Wi-Fi project. And that will be presented by our Economic Development Manager, Hader Alawami, and the Chair of our Business Roundtable, Aaron Kitzman. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. The item, and the item before you tonight regarding the Business Roundtable involves two items. One of them is, every two-year, the Business Roundtable put together a work plan that they present to the council for approval, so they can keep working. And the second one is a project that came out from the Economic Development Subcommittee, which is the Wi-Fi project. So briefly, I'll just go over that. As I mentioned, there's two items before you tonight. The next two years' work plan, from July 1st, 2017, to June 30th, 2019, and then the public Wi-Fi project. Two years ago, the city council approved the current Business Roundtable work plan, and it includes four tasks. And they are entitlement and permit processing, green business, economic development, and signage. For each task, there's a subcommittee that members of the Business Roundtable volunteer to work on that. And in May of this year, the Business Roundtable discussed the old work plan, and they decided that they want to continue with the same tasks. They felt there is a lot of work to do, so that's their decision. So the last two years, there's a lot of progress made by the Business Roundtable. One of them is what's going to be presented tonight with regard to the proposed public Wi-Fi, permit and entitlement process. I've been meeting with staff, as well as signage and green business, have been meeting with staff regularly, and we're hoping that in the near future, more recommendation to come before the city council. So the recommendation for my part is that the city council approve the next two-year work plan for the Business Roundtable. And regarding the public Wi-Fi, as I mentioned, Economic Development Subcommittee has been working on this for the past two years, and the goal is to add additional amenity to the downtown area, which we, staff and the city council have been reviewing for a while now. So with that, I'll turn attention to the Chair of the Business Roundtable for a brief comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Hader. So once again, my name is Aaron Kitzman. I'm currently the Chair of the Thousand Oaks Business Roundtable. And again, our mission is to help attract and retain business in the city of Thousand Oaks. And so many months ago, I guess it was about two years ago, from what Hader's saying, we sat down and tried to figure out how we could marry our mission to the council's goal of developing downtown Thousand Oaks into a thriving, pedestrian-friendly sort of hub of our city, and attract more people to our city. And this was the idea that we came up with. So again, it's about providing free public Wi-Fi along portions of Thousand Oaks Boulevard. There are many other cities, and I think Ping Fang in a moment will discuss that, that have done that and have seen positive results. So that's sort of what we want to present tonight. And I think at this point, I'm going to turn the presentation actually over to Ping Fang. Ping is the Chair of the Roundtable Economic Development and Small Business Support Subcommittee. And so this project has fallen under his committee, and he's taken a lead role in developing the plan. So Ping?
Thank you, Aaron, and thank you, the council. And this is my first time, so a little bit, not quite sure about the protocols, but anyway. Basically, the project is about the public Wi-Fi project of a public space. And this is differentiating between public and private space, because the private space is where the private business belongs. So we use this as an opportunity to sort of demonstrate what the public Wi-Fi would be. And that's for, it's under the public space. The section to which this project covers is in Teal Boulevard, between the Earps and Canejo Road, which covers a lot of the stores and the public buildings, like this one as well. And the opportunity is trying to combine this project with the downtown improvement for the city street. And the reason why we want to engage for doing this public Wi-Fi project have two reasons. One is to add the lifestyle amenities along the Teal Boulevard, so it will enhance the downtown areas or future downtown space. And the second one is also, we want to leverage the technology element, so that it enhances the technical savvy image for a city like Thousand Oaks. And throughout, this is a graphic view of where that section of the Teal Boulevard is. And we did some sort of studies of the cities around the country. The closest one that we have here is showing for Santa Monica, where you see all the, you know, colored streets are lit with Wi-Fi capabilities. And this obviously adds enormous, you know, coverage for that downtown. They started this, coupled with the broadband, almost 10, more than 10, 15 years ago. And look what they have given the Santa Monica, to its reputation now being the Silicon Beach. Here is San Francisco, where you can have through public Wi-Fi add a welcome page as city, be a city messaging center to the visitors. And here is another example for the city of New York, where they use this public Wi-Fi facilities, coupled with the advertisement to subsidize some of the, you know, features. Here is Chicago, where you can see an example of some of the equipment used. All you see is the little shiny piece, I don't know if, is this piece being the Wi-Fi equipment. Here is a similar sort of a city closer to us, maybe, well, Santa Rosa, similar size in size. You see all these dots. That's where the Wi-Fi were enabled in those section. So here's a look at, from a design perspective, what you have in infrastructure, where obviously... So here's a look at, from a design perspective, what you have in infrastructure, where obviously, where's the, oh, here, where the, where the hotspot and the access point are linked back to the internet through the internet back call. And here, the point is, there's two different kind of infrastructure going to the internet. One is shared. We can share the cost and the infrastructure with an existing sort of internet connections from the buildings. And the other one is to have a dedicated one, which will then obviously segregate. The whole point here is we have different choices. And part of the, you know, recommendation here is not to approve as a project, but to study the feasibilities and going forward. So here is a sample estimated cost. I point out, this is an estimated cost, because this is a cost that we got from Verizon or Frontier as a first, first estimates. There was no discussion on what the, what the, what the design and subperson, how should I say, details about. And for the service, they cover two portions. One is the internet services, the other one is for the content, like a messaging center. So here is some of the assumptions going into the estimates. And here's the annual budget estimated for the year. As if you would proceed, approve the recommendation, which the city staff will go into further study of the feasibility and the cost provisions. So here's the recommendation. One is to recommend or direct city staff to proceed with the project. And then the second one is to create a technology policy when this is deployed in a wider area of the city. And then the third one is basically to have staff work with the Roundtable to develop further guidelines for future projects. So with that, I'll open up for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Feng. I only saw two recommendations on the staff report, not three. Did I miss something? Okay. You mentioned a third one, so about working with staff.
Yeah, the staff report talks about, yeah, the second item in the staff report actually covers the three recommendation that Ping mentioned. So the first one is to approve the Business Roundtable. And the second one covers more detailed recommendation that's presented.
We do have a question or a comment from Councilmember Fox.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess my, Mr. Alawami, again, my question is, in looking at the area where the Wi-Fi would be provided, it's the same area that we're looking at in the downtown area. And my question would be, isn't that something we could talk to the various developers about, including in the project?
We can, but most developers will provide public Wi-Fi either within the building or immediately just outside the building. What this proposed project is, is within the sidewalk and the street itself, and the public space that we own. There's a lot of public space in front of the Civic Arts Plaza, as well as the park between the lakes and the Civic Arts Plaza. That's the areas we're talking about providing the Wi-Fi service to. The developers will provide Wi-Fi within their own parameters to serve the businesses. But what we're talking about here is the sidewalk and the street. Just in case there's a public event in the street, there's no, there's no public Wi-Fi in there. So this is kind of provide that amenity there.
I'm not that familiar with the technology, but, which comes as a surprise to my colleagues. Isn't that an issue of, is it just simply an issue of coverage?
Well, to answer that, it is an issue of coverage. And obviously, you tune the coverage through the technology. Just as an example, the lake has, within each stores, they have an existing Wi-Fi for their, you know, customers.
Right.
But outside, you don't have. That's, that's where this project is trying to cover. And with public events in front of the city hall is another occasion.
I guess what I'm saying is, is that if we, you mentioned the lakes, so he's probably going to not watch the council meeting tonight. But if we, for example, talk to Caruso Affiliated and said, hey, we want you to provide Wi-Fi for the public space of the lakes, what would stop them from doing that?
There's, there is, should I ask, is no. There is another effort that we did reach to the, what's the, Teal Council, the business.
Shaun, Shaun Murad in there.
We did talk to the.
Toba.
Toba. And they liked the idea as well. So this is just an example to illustrate, you know, how, how you go about doing this kind of projects. When it, once this is successful, then they can take over to propagate along the Boulevard.
All right. Thanks.
The next council member would be Al Adam, and then Mr. Price.
Well, I was going to move the staff recommendations here, just for the comment. Then Mr. Price.
We do have a speaker, a public speaker.
Oh, we do. Well, then, shall we have the speaker and then?
Yes. Mr. Price, did you want to say something before I called Mrs. Duckett?
I think so. So I've met with Mr. Feng and Aaron Kitzman, and then discussed this last year, I believe it was. And I think the idea, and I think this is where Councilmember Fox is, or Mayor Pro Tem Fox is not, there's a little disconnect here. It would allow people to, correct me if I'm wrong, but it would allow people to travel the distance of Herbs to Kaneo School Road, being on the same Wi-Fi network, and not have to rely on the network provided by the Daly Group at his project, and then go to the next store where they'd have to connect into a different Wi-Fi signal. So this would be seamless. The transition would be smooth.
Could I just offer a, before a motion's made, it just seems to me that something, just for discussion purposes, we're going to, later, we're going to deal with a consultant on the Boulevard.
And I was going to make the same comment.
We're on the same page there.
Yeah, we are.
Okay. Go ahead.
You want to do that after the, after the motion's made, or you?
Well, I'm thinking to refer it to them, and to look at it in its entirety. It just seems to me we're.
I was going to include that in my motion, as a matter of fact.
Well, we do have a speaker first.
The two of us will be quiet then.
Mrs. Duckett. Suzanne Duckett is our only speaker on this issue.
Thank you, Suzanne Duckett, Thousand Oaks. It's probably a little bit late for this plan, but because of the last few days in Houston, we need to start forward-thinking about the earthquake that's coming. And if you put this plan in, I want this plan to be a designated location for earthquake safety. I want plans in there for offices, supplies, education, and giveaways, as well as the entire city. If they want to give good things away for free to advertise, they can give away earthquake safety supplies. I want this area to be thinking about, because Houston is like nothing that's going to happen to California State. We have to be independent. We have to have supplies at our middle schools and our high schools. We have to have, we have to have large generators, air filters, because there're going to be microorganisms that are going to come up with the earthquake. We have to have C-Rat, well, what used to be called C-Rations, I think they're called M-RCs now, whatever those supplies, what are they? Again?
They're called M-REs.
M-REs. Thank you, Mr. Fox.
That's what the firefighters.
You do correct me sometimes.
That's what the firefighters eat while they're big heroes, while the cops are eating the helmets.
Oh, you do. Okay, so we need those at schools, that I hope will be designated locations. They have to be designated locations. That's a very strong term. We have to have bottled water. We have to have bedding. We have to have microwaves, because we won't have gas until that's all certified by the fire department. We have to have batteries. We have to have paper supplies, TP towels. We have to have diapers for young as well as old. And we need formula. So there's a lot of stuff that we have to put together for our earthquake program that I hope the city manager's going to put together tonight, as well as this, as well as it going on the agenda for the Business Roundtable work plan. I want to see that going in tonight.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Duckett.
If I have another second, I don't want to see, I don't want to see, I want to see money given to the fire department, and I don't want to see money given, additional money given to the police department. I don't want to see any of, either one of those two programs cut back. I want to see more money, because I know, I know in the traffic department for the police, they have a low budget for the traffic department, and that, I was horrified to hear that. So I don't want any money cut. I want money given to the police department and the fire department, the good guys in town. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Fox and Mr. Price are appreciative of your comments. One is a firefighter and the other one, former police officer. Now, this particular item, however, dealt with a Wi-Fi project, public Wi-Fi project that is part of the work plan. We're not adding anything tonight to the work plan, I don't think. Well, we are, but public Wi-Fi is, is the focus. If I may add to this particular subject, and it is true, all the different businesses up and down Thousand Oaks Boulevard have offered their own, I shouldn't say all, there are many, which offer their own public Wi-Fi. And I'm, I'm just wondering what, what the cost would be for security, because public Wi-Fi exposes, obviously, a lot of data and information. I'm not sure whether the, what I would like to know is whether those $40,000 would include some sort of security system, cybersecurity, software program, system. And also, what I would like to know is, is that something that can be worked on after we've already seen more development on the Boulevard, and perhaps we have negotiated with developers who are interested in coming to the Boulevard to build units? That, that is something that I would like to, to find out. Now, I know Mr. Fox mentioned the consultant. If we can have the Business Roundtable figure that out without the city needing to pay the consultant extra to figure this out, perhaps that would be one way to go. But at this time, I, I, before I jump on the bandwagon, I have many more questions before I could embrace the idea of this concept or proposal.
I can answer that. With regard to the system itself, again, this is just an estimate from one provider. We, the Business Roundtable did not dive in into all the details. This is just presented to you as an idea. If the City Council decides tonight they want to move forward with it, there's going to be a lot more research on it with staff, as well as the Business Roundtable, to fine-tune the entire concept and come back with, to you with details. We know cybersecurity is a concern, and definitely, whoever the provider will be, that will be a question we need to ask them.
That is something that is worth researching, as well as the reliability of any provider that we are contacting, because after 18 months of nothing but headaches with none other than Frontier Communications, which are now moving to Newberry Park from Oxnard, I have really nothing but a great distaste for a nationwide national company which cannot deliver basic cable service or internet service. That is a huge problem.
I do understand Frontier. That's, two years ago, we didn't have the problems of Frontier. So that's the, the initial contact the Business Roundtable did. And again, this is just an example. We're not deciding who we're going to go with. That's not the decision tonight.
I completely understand that, yes. No, no, I understand it, but I wanted to be on the record that Frontier wouldn't be my first choice.
Correct. We're going to evaluate the providers. We're going to go through them, make sure whatever concept we do, it's acceptable to the city.
But the staff also needs to be prepared that should the City Council move forward with this, that after two years of research, we give you a thumbs down, that you don't feel bad about that.
This is a business round.
Mr. Feng, I know this is, this is.
It's a recommendation.
It's nothing personal.
Correct.
Oh, yes, go ahead, Mr. Powers.
If I, if I may, just to, to help kind of pull together all the different things that I've heard here, we, the council did approve the master plan consultant contract under consent earlier this evening, item 7M. And that would not be an expansion of the scope, because they're going to be looking at similar downtown sizes and scopes as ours. And so I'm confident that, that these things can kind of dovetail together. And the Business Roundtable will be involved through Hader in that process. So that might be a, a good avenue to go down to take an incremental step here, should the council decide.
Thank you. Let's see, we do have, oh, Mr. Powers, you did hit the button. Okay, very good. Are there any other comments regarding this particular issue before someone makes a motion? Mr. Adam, you want to go back?
Yeah. Well, first of all, I want to commend the Business Roundtable for coming up with this idea in the first place. I think it ultimately is a good idea, and that you expanded your horizons a little bit, and you're looking at something like this. And you have hit the location exactly. This is exactly where the City Council's focusing, from Herbs to Kaneo School Road. This is our downtown core. So you're right in the right area. As the other council members mentioned, earlier in the evening, we did hire Raimi and Associates as consultants to help us devise a downtown master plan. And I think we all agree that, you know, these, these folks are professionals in their field. We hired them because we want to make sure we get this master plan right. And I think this Wi-Fi could very well be helping us to get that master plan right. So I want to run this by Raimi and Associates with the various issues that came up this evening, as far as funding, as far as a provider, as far as what the cost would be, cybersecurity, the timing of it. Because I don't think, at the moment, we probably don't quite have the development to justify it yet. But we may, we will eventually, I think. So I want to take advantage of Raimi and Associates and have them take a look at this, and have staff take a look at it, and, you know, get back to the Business Roundtable with some of the things that we found, and, and keep this idea moving along. So I think that's all there is.
Well, the question I have is, if this consultant that we approved tonight, is this already within their scope to look at public Wi-Fi, or is that extra?
Mr. Powers?
I can, I can tell you that in reviewing the contract myself, the scope is broad enough because they're touching on all areas from parking to financial to infrastructure. And this would be fall in the infrastructure category. So it would not be an expansion of the scope.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we're not spending, duplicating efforts and spending money when we could have the Business Roundtable work on this. Just want to make sure.
Good point. Good point.
All right.
So with those comments, I'll move staff recommendations and continue, I guess the best way to put it is continue with the Wi-Fi conceptual idea, working with our consultants and staff to come back to us later on.
As well as to approve the Business Roundtable work plan for the next two years.
That is correct.
Numbers one and two. All right. If there are no further questions, please vote.
That motion carries 4-0 with Councilmember McCoy absent.
Thank you. And now, we will toss it to our city manager, Mr. Powers, for follow-up items.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Our next city council meeting will be on the 12th of September. We, that evening, will be doing our annual joint Fire and Police Honor Guard in recognition of September 11th anniversary. We will have also recognition of the California Lutheran University Baseball World Series Champions after they're all back from summer break. Currently, two public hearings slated, the review and approval of the 2016-17 Kapper Report, and an MCA relating to streamlined review process for electric vehicle charging stations to be in compliance with state law. And then, our department report that evening will be a presentation of our Economic Development Strategic Plan by Cosmoic Companies, and also a development update about things happening in and around town. Also want to make sure I mention that we will have a special meeting. We have a kind of a heavy calendar moving into the fall. We'll have a special meeting on the 19th of September, which will be that next week, just so folks will get that on their calendars. Wanted to mention that earlier. And for those that saw some of our coverage today, we did launch the city's brand-new mobile app for reporting, reporting issues that you find in and around town, whether those be street and road issues or tree issues. And it's, you can find it at the App Store if you use an iPhone device, and it's under Connect TO. You can also go to t-oaks.org, our website, and it'll have a direct link over to it. That's it.
Thank you so much. And now to our city attorney, Tracy Noonan, for announcements for various closed sessions or of closed sessions.
Thank you. We have three closed session matters tonight, all are existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.98. First is the claim of Susan and Charles Thorburn, claim number 1383, 2017. Second matter is the claim of Gloria Ware Pessis, Workers' Compensation Number THWC 1911, 2002, 2005. And the final one is before the Public Utilities Commission of the State of California, application of California American Water Company for authorization to increase its revenues for water service by $34,559,200 or 16.29% in the year 2018, by $8,478,500 or 3.43% in the year 2019, and by $7,742,600 or 3.3% in the year 2020. Application number 1607002, City of Thousand Oaks, party of interest. It's unlikely I'll have anything to report following these closed sessions.
Thank you, Ms. Noonan. And this evening, we will adjourn in memory of two very special people who've had quite an impact on our community. The first is Gwen Wagner Hofer. Gwen passed away July 12th, and she was surrounded by her family. She was the wife of the Canejo Recreation Park District Director Chuck Hofer. Gwen was born in Cleveland, Ohio, and grew up in Pennsylvania. She graduated from the College of Worcester, where she met her future husband and companion of more than 47 years, Chuck. As I mentioned, Chuck is a current board member with CRPD, and he has been serving as a member of the board since 2012. Gwen earned a medical degree from Ohio State University, followed by two years active duty as a Navy Lieutenant in San Diego. She completed her pediatric residency at Children's Hospital of Los Angeles. Gwen lived a life dedicated to healing, devoting more than 37 years as a pediatrician in the Canejo Valley and surrounding communities. She specialized in developmental and behavioral pediatrics, most recently at a clinic serving low-income families. Despite her diagnosis with cancer nine years ago, Gwen never slowed down. She became active with a local cancer support community in Westlake Village and the support group Naughty Knitters. She knitted hundreds of beautiful scarves, blankets, and sweaters that are cherished by those who received them as gifts from Gwen. Gwen was a member of the Church of the Epiphany in Oak Park and a active, and she was active in the local chapter of PEO, which is an international philanthropic women's group helping women reach for the stars. Among her passions were camping, classical music, theater, gardening, running, and later walking when she could no longer run. Throughout her life, she loved giraffes and amassed a collection of them on her travels and as gifts from friends and family, who will always think fondly of her when they see a giraffe. Gwen's generosity continues even after her death, as she chose to donate her body for research and education. The next generation of physicians will learn from her final gift, so that they may carry on her legacy. We extend our deepest condolences to her husband Chuck, her children Rick and Robin, and to her extended family and friends as they mourn this loss. The second adjournment this evening, John Slade, much-loved professional actor, director, singer, and educator, passed away July 7th as the result of an automobile accident as he returned home from a theater rehearsal. John's varied career in the arts spanning more than 40 years started as a student at the University of Michigan, writing award-winning, writing award-winning plays under the tutelage of Arthur Miller's mentor, Dr. Kenneth Rowe. With luminary classmate Gilda Radner, he founded the Eastbound Mound, a repertory company that combined drama, comedy, and music, and was, according to Radner, a forerunner of Saturday Night Live. By his early 20s, he worked as artistic director of the Grist Mill Playhouse in New Jersey and as resident actor at Baltimore Center Stage. John later graduated with honors from the USC School of Theater, received his teaching credential in English from LAUSD, and a master's degree in theater education from Northern Colorado University. John acted at theaters throughout Southern California in title roles as King Lear, The Friar in Romeo and Juliet, Cassius in Julius Caesar, and Scanlan in One Flew Over the Cuckoo's Nest. John also played an array of bad guys, cops, and doctors on network television for Hill Street Blues and L.A. Law, and supporting roles in major films, including Titanic and L.A. Confidential. In 2001, he began teaching theater arts and American literature at Nordoff High School in Ojai. He loved helping kids find their own voices and had a desire to pass his skills on to the next generation of actors and musicians. John's favorite theatrical role, however, was as a director and writer. At the time of his passing, John was directing this summer's production of Julius Caesar for the Kingsman Shakespeare Company at California Lutheran University. John was an integral part of the company for many years, and this would have been his fourth time directing a Kingsman production. One of John's latest and most beloved projects was touring the country, performing his one-man play Whitman Sings, his uniquely creative tribute to the much-loved poet. In addition to his wife Lori, John leaves behind two sons, Demian and Max. John was a truly unique and talented individual, universally admired, deeply respected and adored, and he too will be greatly missed by family, friends, and colleagues. And with that, we will adjourn tonight's meeting until our next meeting on September 12th.